...of the Scottsdale Unified School District Governing Board. Today is Monday, November 19th, 2018. The time is 1:02. And we will start with a roll call from my far right.
Sandy Kravitz.
Allison Beckham.
Pam Currie.
Kim Harmon.
Barbara Kerleberg. All four members are present. We do have a quorum. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll get directly to our one and only item, Superintendent Search. Dr. Kriekard, do you want to start off with introductions?
Thank you, President Kerleberg, members of the board. I'd like to say first, for the record, that these items, four items, are listed as possible board action items. So this does give you flexibility. You may be asking for help. You may be asked to supply some information, which would all be discussion, but is not necessarily requiring action on your part. So with that, I would like to present once again, members of the McPherson Jacobson Search Firm. Very happy even for Dr. Jacobson to return, but also, we have two very good friends of mine, Dr. Steve Joel, who is a superintendent in Nebraska that I met through a superintendent's leadership group nationally when I was in Paradise Valley, and Dr. Mary Camersall from Catalina Flahills, the superintendent of possibly the leading school district in the state of Arizona. And Mary's been there a long time, done great work over many years in a wonderful district. So welcome to all of you. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. It's great to be here again, in your fine city, especially when it was 13 degrees in Omaha last night. Good to be here. Dr. Camersall is our Arizona Specialist. Been here 20-plus years. She knows your rules, regulations, and keeps us making sure we're heading down the right road here to do it. Dr. Joel's been with us 24 years, and he has, as has been stated, well-connected nationally. He's our national recruiter. And so that's going to be their primary roles and also in the vetting process. Today, what we want to do, basically, is some logistical items. We're going to share the stakeholder report with you and go through the executive summary. Dr. Joel's going to talk about the logistics for the interview process and interview questions, and Dr. Camersall's going to talk about compensation, so we can get some direction on that. So you should have in front of you a bound copy of the stakeholder report. It'll be posted on our website today, and I believe on your website today, so it's available to your public. I am going to talk about the executive summary, which is in the first section, and you certainly can read all the other input. Everything that's in there is a comment from one of your stakeholders that we wrote down and put in there. We had a team of five here in October 23rd, '24, '25. We met at your five learning communities and had input from students, teachers, principals, parents, community groups. The team reported that they felt it was very well-attended, that they got good input. We also posted online a survey for those that could not attend those meetings, and we had 100, almost 200 people respond to that. And this is the summary of that. What we do is, we go through what we heard from them, and we try to find the reoccurring themes for these four questions. Now, the first two questions are, tell us a good thing about this community and good things about the school district. That's important for us, because we're selling you to the candidate, and it's important that we know that. The third question is, what are the issues here? If you could talk to the new superintendent, what would you want him or her to be aware of for them to be successful? And then the final question are, what are the skills, qualities, characteristics they would like to see in that new superintendent? So a lot of things about good things, obviously, your climate, your city, the recreational opportunities where you're located. Old town was mentioned. Your medical facilities were mentioned as a positive. Higher education, the diversity of the community was pointed out as a strong thing, local parks, and just the community in general. About the school districts, and that's on page two, great fine arts programs, students are supported and encouraged, diversity is respected, dual enrollment classes, school choice is offered for all students, variety of programs, committed staff, good athletic programs, academics are seen as strong with rising test scores, building administrators are seen as an asset, 90% of the schools are rated A and B, great staff, numerous clubs. The issues, if they could talk to the new superintendent, lack of trust, lack of trust from the community to the board, and then also, lack of trust to the district office were two big issues that kept coming up. Inequity in salary compensation. Morale is perceived as low. Financial management is a question. The role of charter schools in your community is an issue. Communication gap within the district. The one I picked up on here is the superintendent needs to know the district's craving stability and longevity, and that's what we want accomplished also, to do that. And then the final one about the board makeup for the interviews and interview process to do that, we'll talk a little bit about that today. And then, the characteristics they would like to see in the new superintendent, a communicator, someone who's visible in the community, a collaborator, fiscally responsible, someone with honesty and integrity, an educator, has experienced education, experienced with diverse cultures, relationship builder, visible in the community, listens to input and genuinely considers input, respects the staff, embraces change, visionary, and longevity. A lot of those things that you also put into your selection criteria. Now, this is 75 pages, I think, I'll let you read it at your leisure, but those were the reoccurring themes that we heard from those groups as we went through it. Are there any comments or questions about what's in here? Okay. I'm going to let, and again, that's posted on our website, and it's on your website, so it's available to your community. Everybody can see it now. I'll let Dr. Joel talk about the logistics of the interview.
Wow, no questions on stakeholder reports. So first of all, it's a real pleasure to work with Scottsdale Board. And Dr. Kriekard said, he and I have known each other through some national connections for quite a while. You know, as I've been the one that's been on the phone the most with potential candidates, one of the selling points, I think, for candidates right now, Scottsdale is a very appealing location, and much of what candidates refer to when they're talking to me is about what Scottsdale was and how they were represented nationally. And I can tell you that in conversations that I'm having with them, we don't want it to ever be about location, we want it to be about mission, we want it to be about commitment. And bringing in Dr. Kriekard is an interim based on what we've discovered through the stakeholder report. There's a lot of work that needs to be done right now to regain trust in your communities, with your internal and external stakeholders. You couldn't have picked a better interim superintendent to come in and do that. Somebody that's had a lot of success. So what I've been telling candidates is that there's work here, and it isn't going to be an easy road to hoe, and there probably is some baggage that has to be addressed. But the future's bright when the board, the community, and the internal stakeholder groups wrap their arms around the next superintendent candidate. So that's what we're selling. And, you know, I'm very optimistic based on the early returns. There aren't, you know, we probably have a couple of dozen applications at this point, but that doesn't mean much, because people hit send 10 minutes before the deadline is due, is what we historically have seen.
As of this morning, we had 34 individuals that had started the application process, and they still have time to finish it. Didn't mean it.
No, no, that's fine. And again, I don't, we don't put a lot of stock in it until the deadline actually approaches. But there's a lot of phone calls out there, there's a lot of people researching you, there's a lot of candidates that are going to be looking at the stakeholder reports and asking us questions. So we feel like we've got a pretty good snapshot of where you sit today and where you want to go in the future, but I certainly think that we're going to be able to find some good quality candidates. So I have two rolls today. One is, Michelle, I think, sent an email out about questions that you would like to ask during the interview process. If you would, and a couple of ways that we do that, I mean, we're very capable of writing questions for you based on the criteria that you've developed. My preferred way to do that is to have you each submit three, four, or five questions that you would like to ask a prospective candidate, and then we'll put them, we'll group, I'll group them, I'll organize them, wordsmith them, make sure they're legally correct, and then we'll bring them back to you when we present finalists in December. So if you would take that as a homework assignment, and in the next week or so, if you would just write down the things that you would really like to ask a candidate, and then I'll work with Michelle, and we'll get that to you in fairly good order, so that you can edit. We won't be redundant, but we want to get to your questions. I mean, that's the purpose of the interview. And then, when we come back in December, we'll also work with you on how you're going to be interviewed by these candidates when they come in and they sit down with you as part of the process. So if you do that in the next week or so, you know, maybe after Thanksgiving, we can get to work on it, make sure that we have it when we come back in December. Okay? Good. All right, so, please.
Thank you for coming. Just so you know, I kind of did the assignment beforehand, because I thought we were going to be talking about today. So just, if you're expecting three or four, I had about 16 to 20 questions I was going to submit to you.
Okay.
So just want to make you aware that we might have more than that, and you'll put them together. Just if you're expecting three or four.
Send as many as you like. I mean, and as long as you put your name to it, I'll make sure that everybody's duly represented. And we don't want it to be redundant, we want it to be fairly, you know, fairly general. We don't really look for trick questions as much as we look for just honest interaction between candidate and board. Okay? Any other questions? Yes?
Yeah, what is your process on determining what the questions are from what we submit?
Determining what the questions are in terms of...
From what we submit?
Right.
So we submit questions. What do you do with it then?
If you have time, go ahead and prioritize your questions, and I'll make sure that your priorities will be included. We'll group them around certain sections. So for example, it might be academic leadership, it might be finance and facilities, it might be working with the board, it might be, might be the politics of education, I'm making these up, of course. And we've got about five or six or seven themes. We'll group them accordingly, and then when you sit down with your superintendent to candidate to have an interview, we'll make sure that they have a copy of those questions as well as yours, as you're asking them. So we don't like to see much more than 18 to 22 questions. That's about an hour and a half of good solid two-way conversation, followed by Q and A. Reasonably confident that every superintendent that you talk to will have a bunch of questions for you, and we'll do our best to brief you on, you know, hopefully being ready for those questions when they come.
So not all of our questions may be included?
Right.
And we won't know, because we're submitting them directly to you, so we will have no visibility on what the other board members submitted. Is that correct?
Well, you can determine that process. I mean, you can, you can, yeah, if you like, if you want to see what everybody else is submitting, I think that that's fine.
Well, I'm just thinking through it. I don't really have a point of view, because if we see, then it becomes a public document, and then the interviewees can see the questions before they show up.
You don't want that.
Right. So I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud a little bit.
Can we submit our questions to Michelle, and then Michelle, can she share them with us? I would like to see what...
That may be spoke to the real anyway.
Yeah. It wouldn't be privileged unless it was seeking legal advice, and that would be, you know, I could have that discussion certainly, if there were any questions that I would consider, that I would say you shouldn't ask because of a legal reason, but...
Yeah, I'm just thinking, if one of my colleagues asks a question that I think's better than something that I came up with, I would rather that question be asked than my piddly question.
Right. I would agree with that. I don't know how we can work through that.
We're not taking an action on this, so why would it adhere to the admitting laws regarding the questions?
If you submit questions to me, and they are not privileged in some way, then they could be a public document. That's my only answer to that.
Anything either of us send to you could be received in a public records request.
Unless you're seeking legal advice, or it's privileged in some other way.
Right.
That doesn't mean I can't take the questions, and, I mean, I can certainly be in the conduit, I'm just saying that they wouldn't automatically be privileged.
Okay.
If I may, having done this a lot over the years, if I get your questions, and I'll look through them all first, I'll begin to categorize them, I'll make sure the best question is asked. So if there's a surface question of, I'm making this up, so don't be offended, the question is a yes or no question, right? Do you like kids? And then somebody asks another question, is how do you demonstrate your belief that all kids can succeed every day in our district? We'll go with that question.
Yeah, we expect you to.
And that's not going to offend you, right? But I'll make sure that you're, I'll try to capture the essence of what you're thinking, and I'll put it into a document, but it's been our experience, particularly in Arizona, if they come to me directly, then we don't have to worry about them being published in which candidates have access to those questions before they ever arrive. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
And when we do meet an executive session in December to talk about potential finalists, we'll also be discussing interview questions, so you'll have an opportunity then to take a look.
Okay, good.
You'll have an opportunity to take a look.
So this is... Why do you say that? Thank you.
Well, and quite frankly, you'll gain a sense from us what a decent response to that question might be, what should you look for. And when you get the questions from the home office, there's a place for you to write, so you can write your comments, you can listen for certain things, and we'll coach up on that. It's part of what we do. But I want to get something put together, so that when we come back in December, we have something actionable we can begin to work on.
Okay, great.
Okay?
Just a quick request. Can you, Sandra, can you resend us the summary of the qualifications that we use to publish for a job description? Because that's by a good basis for a question.
Yes.
Good call.
And we ask the applicants to address those in their application materials.
Oh, good.
Can I ask them just another process-related question? So of the 34 that have already been started, the 34 applications, do you have an experience that would say how many will actually follow through the process and press submit?
We did a study a few years ago, and about 75 to 80% of people that applied do it on the last two days. So we expect there will be more coming in. They're busy people, they leave it till the very end.
So that makes sense. What I'm saying is, of the 34 that have been requested, how many tend to go through the whole process and hit submit?
I would say about 80%.
Okay.
There's some, after they research you, or maybe they're taking a job someplace else, don't finish the process.
However, there will be more than 34 by the time we get to the end.
Okay, great. So that seems like a reasonable set. Can I ask one more question? So I had sent a couple of considerations for candidates, but I never heard back. So how does that fit?
I received them, and I'm following up.
Okay. So is that something you typically get back to us, let us know this is what's happening, or is that just part of this update today?
Just know, if we got a name that we reached out to them.
Yeah. Ultimately, again, in that December meeting, we can share with you who has applied.
Okay, I'm interested.
And we can have that kind of conversation. And it's too early to say whether any of these names will come forward.
Right.
As a potential semifinalist with a video that you'll be watching, but we will and are following up on any names that we receive from you.
All right, thanks.
So a couple of things to keep in mind with regard to the applicant pool. One, this is, you know, you're ahead of the curve. So, you know, in a lot of ways, having the application process completed by Christmas time, and then interviews right after the first of the year, you're ahead of the vast majority of the country. It's slow right now, so there aren't a lot of jobs of your stature that are open, certainly in Arizona, but around this part of the country. After January, there's going to be a lot. And there's, and so candidates are a little bit tentative right now, because they're hoping or waiting to see what else would materialize. And so that's why that last couple of days is when we get all those applications. The other thing is, the sitting superintendents that I've been talking with, that have, that match your criteria, are always nervous and worried about what happens in their own district, right? So that's just, that's just an art that has to be, they have to figure that out, because nobody likes it when a good superintendent decides to apply for another job, right? And then bidding wars ensue and all of that. But those candidates are candidates that, for whatever reason, are ready for change. Maybe it's a change in state, maybe it's just a change in location, but they're successful people. So they may be in there, but they may withdraw as they get closer, depending upon what their local politics are. And then, Dr. Camersall's going to be talking about compensation. That's going to be a big factor, too. You know, I mean, as I've been speaking with candidates in surrounding states, you know, the dollars are going to be a driver, and we'll talk to you about that as well, too. So a lot of things go into that, which is why the 34 number sounds good, really good, but I would tell you, it's quality at the end that matters the most. And if we get it right, and we bring in three or four top-notch people, and it's a tough choice for you, then we feel really good about the search. Okay? Good. Any other questions on it? Okay. All right, so let's talk about interview schedules. So the deadline is November 27th. That's when all applications have to be in by 5:00. And we're pretty strict about that. So we tell our candidates, if you don't have all your materials completed by then, you know, for all intents and purposes, we're going to close the deadline. December 20th, we're coming back in then, gives us about a month, excuse me, about a month, about three and a half weeks, to really vet the candidates against criteria. You know, I know Dr. Jacobson talked about, you know, how deep we go on references. We try to go as, we try to find out everything that we can find out. I mean, so if there's baggage, which most superintendents, if they're sitting superintendents, there's probably going to be some Google News stories, there's going to be lawsuits, there's going to be all of that, we'll find out the in-depth details about those kinds of things. And we always ask candidates, first of all, we'll do a preliminary phone interview with each one of those that we believe have your criteria met, and we always end it with the question, you know, are there any skeletons in your closet? Is there anything that if your name is made public, can be an embarrassment to you or to the Scottsdale District? And you'd be pretty impressed what we get then as a result of that. Anything from a speeding ticket in college to, you know, something that is unresolved. But that's our way of making sure that, you know, we don't, there aren't any surprises, or hopefully there isn't a headline after a name is announced that, you know, something that's occurred. And fortunately, we've been very successful with that. So then, on January 22nd, so we'll come in on the 20th, we'll spend, we need a few hours of your time. That'll be in closed session. We'll have video interviews of the folks that we believe most closely match your criteria. Those won't be long, those are five to eight minutes. They're done typically at their kitchen tables. Some are brave enough to do it in their offices with the doors shut, but it'll just be a way for them to connect to you around three or four questions. One of them is, why did you decide to apply for this particular superintendency? So you get a chance to see, as you're looking through materials, you get a chance to see who they are and how that matches up with how they write and express themselves. So we've got three or four days set up for interviews, and we don't know now, you know, how many of those days will be used. Our model strongly suggests that it's one superintendent, one day. Districts sometimes like to do two superintendents in one day, two interviews in one day. That's entirely up to you. But when we build a schedule, we try to build a schedule around a full-day experience, so that your candidate actually would come in the night before, unless they're from someplace close in the area, and would have a full day of interacting with your internal and your external stakeholder groups, culminated with an interview that you would conduct with them. And of course, we will get you ready for that interview. So let me just kind of, what I roughed out earlier today with regard to a potential schedule, and then I have a couple of questions for you that I need some interaction on. So 9:00 is, seems like nice Arizona time to start a day, right? So what we would like to do with the candidate, have the candidate do is arrive, be greeted by the chair of the board, or a board designee, just a very nice, glad you're here, thanks for coming, we're looking forward to the interview. And then we'd like to ask Dr. Kriekard, or a designee, to spend some time with each of these candidates, and then include in that time a tour, some form of a tour. Maybe it's a special program you want to show, maybe it's a school, maybe if we do four interviews, it's four different schools, but just a little bit of a drive around your district. About a two-hour time block for that. About 11:00, we'd like to suggest that your executive cabinet have some good time with this particular candidate. Each of these suggested times are about 45 minutes. So we would, you know, we, again, would work with them on coming up with discussion questions that they would like to be asking each of these candidates. We want consistency, which is why when you see your interview questions, you know, we're going to say, we really want you to stick to the script as much as you can, once you agree those are good questions, because what we don't want is one candidate that comes in in the beginning and then doesn't get asked a certain question that the other three get asked, and that becomes a comparison point. We want to try to avoid that if we can. We're building a lunch for about an hour, then I thought, district administrators around 1:00, and I'll get these to Michelle after you give me some feedback. Support staff, we like to suggest that you do an all-call for support staff. Not everybody's going to be able to make it at 2:00, but those that are off-duty, could be food service workers, could be custodial, might be bus drivers, you know, whoever might be interested, but I think you reach out and you let them know that they're an important part of the process. We like to include students. We think that students tell a tremendous story about your district, about what you value, and, you know, that can be orchestrated in any number of ways. Many districts will just get a hold of high school principals and say, send two or three of the students that you'd like, try to represent your student body the best you can, and have them for 45 minutes with the superintendent candidate. Not every district likes to do that, and we're totally fine if that doesn't work logistically, you know, kids are pretty busy, but we like to suggest that teachers are going to be a big part of the process, and so we like to give them a good solid hour at the end of the day, like 4:00. What time does school end?
3:15.
3:15. So 4:00, 4:15. You know, as Michelle works with others, I'll put in the schedule, the times are tentative, but, and then at 5:30, and this is one of my big questions for you, is, do you want, since you had quite a bit of community participation in the stakeholder report, would you prefer, well, I'll tell you two ways we do it. One is, create a community forum group that is the same people that meet with each of the candidates, similar to what these groups represent, are given sheets on, you know, on what they believe are the strengths and the concerns that they might have, you know, probably eight or 10 questions that they would ask each candidate. And that works sometimes with community people, particularly community leaders, schedules are very, very difficult, and getting them to commit to, say, three or four solid days means you've got two missing on Monday, two missing on Tuesday, two missing on Wednesday. And it's very difficult for them to create that consensus report coming from a certain group that, you know, we often like to see. So the alternative is to have a district-wide, open community forum somewhere, maybe in one of your facilities, maybe in a community facility, in which, you know, we send out an all-call through your media, through your website, perhaps some emails to your parent groups, to your Chamber of Commerce, Lions Club, Rotary Club, you know, whatever those groups are, maybe your mayor, if you've got a legislator or two that lives within the district, you know, we would want them to at least know they're invited, in which that would have to be facilitated, because you don't want that to be a free-for-all, where only one or two people dominate. So, you know, we would probably ask a staff member to be a part of that process and be there. So those are the two choices, really, and it's kind of 50/50 what districts do. A lot has to do with your preference.
On the second option that you laid out, the community forum, is it one forum for each candidate, or are all the candidates there the same time?
If you do one candidate a day...
That's my question.
Yeah, we'll have four of those forums, one for each candidate.
If we have four candidates.
If you have four.
Yeah.
If you go with the closer, the more closed format of, let's go get eight to 10 people from the community and your parent group, then, you know, then those people have to commit to four, you know, I mean, they have to commit to four days.
Also, if you have four candidates, like, three or four standing together in an hour session, hour and a half, you know, it's difficult to get to know these folks in that kind of setting.
Well, then it becomes a beauty test.
It's possible, if it's facilitated really well, and the time is used judiciously, so that everybody has an opportunity to respond to the same questions for that audience, and not just one of the three, or whatever.
Is there benefit to have that consistency of, you know, whether it's the parent and community members, so that, just like getting the same questions from the board member, getting the same set of questions, is there a benefit to having that consistency of community members consistently keep that?
Ordinarily, I would say yes, but when I read your stakeholder report, I think the more open and inviting it is, you'll have a lot more people that say this isn't a closed process.
Yes. Could we do possibly some... Could we do possibly some combination of where there's a committee group and then do some kind of virtual meeting where they just do it, you know, just, you know, web meeting where you have all the candidates and one big community forum, something like that?
When you bring all the candidates together at once, what you're going to get is who's the best performer. You're not going to be listening to the content. And so, we prefer they be individually and ask the same questions.
Plus, logistically, if they're all here for four days, because the board is not going to want to conduct four interviews in one day, right? That can be quite an issue for them if traveling from somewhere else and obviously have a responsible position somewhere else that they need to pay attention to.
I'm just trying to strike the right chord because consistency seems like that is of great value, but we have a very active community, so I hate to throw out the process reacting to something, but I don't want to close the process or even create the perception of a closed process, but compromise, right, and compromise the quality of the.
Yeah, and that's why we say it's your, you have to be the ones that make that decision. If you could find 12 people, 15 people, that you believe represented your community in, from a lot of different angles, a lot of different voices, you know who those folks are, then I think maybe you can get to what the community forum, the open forum, would suggest.
No compromise that we've done in other places, we have that dedicated group asking the questions, but anybody can come and observe the process, but it's just the designated group that's asking the questions.
But it's still a commitment of four days.
Yeah, it's four. We want, we want every candidate to think that they're the most important person you're talking to and by having them on one day, that's what happens.
And they're committing to four one-hour days, so 5:30 to 6:30 is what I had ten at.
I like the idea of meeting them individually, otherwise I feel like we have all four candidates at once, it becomes miscongeniality and not, we don't get down to the meat and potatoes. If we do the, you know, 12 committed community members asking the question, would it be beneficial to open up, you know, for video, if we're having a live video feed, would it be beneficial to, or possible, or this great bedlam, to create some sort of go-to meeting where people could interact and submit questions? Or would we be?
I don't know that I've had any experience with that.
Too wide.
And I think the community forum is a delicate one because Dr. Dole pointed out, we want people to get good information. We don't want it to turn to a free for all. And so, we have to have some structure to that.
No, I would agree, but, you know, if we have our, if there's such questions that the community members are asking or, and then at the end, if there's time, I don't know, I was just trying to, so that we're more open and transparent.
What, I'm a little confused on what your hope, what the outcome's going to be, what's the purpose? So, you get this community forum, whether it's closed or it's legal, they ask their questions, then are you going to spend 15 minutes saying, what are your views and then giving that information back? Or what do you do once you have that?
Great question, great question. Here's what we do, with all of the groups, they're going to be giving, each one of them working through their chair, will need a designated chair for each one of these groups. They'll have a sheet that will basically say, what are the strengths of the candidate that you've observed and what are the questions that you have about this candidate? Okay? So, they will fill out one of those on each and they'll submit them to the chair. At the end of the process, the chair in a sealed envelope will give them to you after the last, to Michelle, at the end of the last interview. So, whether it's a wide open community forum, well, you, you know, you might have 30 people, 50 people, you might get 50 of those, you'll have some things to look at prior to you making your decision after you deliberate. So, you're going to have, you're going to have the views and the perceptions and the reflections of lots of people, nothing any more transparent than that, to help you guide your final decision.
So, after each hour meeting, that group stays an extra 15 minutes to a half an hour with a facilitator, I take it?
Right.
And goes through that process, fills out the form and then hands it over.
Right. We coach them though.
The facilitators typically the chairperson for the group.
Right. We coach them not to rank the candidates because what happens in.
Right, because they're filling out a form.
Right, they're filling out a form. And so, one of the things that we don't let them do is to say, my one, two, and my three candidates are, because every group will, if we bring you high quality candidates, every group's going to have them ranked differently. But what you can look for when you get their feedback sheets is themes, trends, what's emerged. And I can tell you this about questions too. And what we like about this process is we may get a question like, I knew this person through a person in a different district, something about bankruptcy. Okay? So, that's a good question that might emerge because if it comes into a group like that, hopefully, we've already done our research, we have the answer. We have to worry about it emerging after a candidate is named. So, we'll get questions like that, you know, well, I could, anyway, it works for us as well because it'll, it'll give us a heads up to anything that may have emerged post the names being made public.
This is the challenge of, you know, your primary responsibility as a board is to hire a superintendent and you want to have community input in the process, but ultimately you make the decision and offer the contract. So, the reason we have this feedback coming in a sealed envelope at the end of the process where you look at this feedback from these groups after you've deliberated is to see if it confirms, and quite often it does, what you have already discussed and identified as strengths of the finalists versus getting all of this deluge, if you will, of feedback from the community and trying to figure out how you process it because it's going to be very, it's going to be an expanse of opinion, whereas the five of you need to deliberate based on the interviews. You will have spent a great deal of time with these candidates. In the interview, you will know a lot about them that these stakeholder groups who are meeting with them for whatever amount of time will have no information about. So, my point is your opinion matters the most and that other feedback coming in probably will not set you off onto another road or can.
It's rare that that happens.
That is rare.
There were a couple of them.
So, I sort of, this is sounding to me very much like after, you know, a presidential debate and they have a panel of people who watch the debate and afterwards they debrief the panel. What did you like, what did you not like? The only thing that's missing is the technology that shows their emotions going up and down.
We don't have that.
No.
My question is, the questions that are asked with the community, whether it be eight or 12 people, are they the same questions for each candidate again?
If you do the closed format.
If we do the closed format, it's the same questions. And if we did the open format, would it be the same questions or no?
Facilitator's got to work a little bit harder to make sure that, that those questions are reasonable questions and that they're not designed to incite anything.
And.
In some instances, we've had the facilitator have a list of questions that they ask the candidates and then people could ask follow-up.
So, will they, one last, will the candidates have, all candidates have access to those questions before they walk in the room? Because if they don't, then the first candidate's disadvantaged.
If we, if we do as Dr. Jacobson suggests, if we arrange, pre-arrange those questions?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
For member Cravitz?
Could the facilit, could the facilitator be somebody from McPherson and Jacobson rather than the Chair of the Committee because I think that would be more objective.
For the department. So, if we went down, I don't really like to keep the word closed because it's not a negative.
But it's a selective group, you know, representative community members that ask the same questions. If we go down that, that path, is there another opportunity where a community member at large can just submit a question? Because chances are, well, here's, here's what I'm thinking, chances are they're going to be very, they're going to be very consistent with the questions we're going to ask anyhow. But the one thing about our community is we have got a community that really vets, uses internet and Google to search things. And so, at least this gives them an opportunity to kind of send it in and you can help do the due diligence because any candidate that brings any amount of experience is going to have somebody who was a dissenter at some point that was probably very vocal and very loud. So, if that exists, that will be found. So, can they send it to you so that way they know it's going to, which is a huge benefit to us, to another party, because that is how it worked in the past, but that would be a huge benefit for that means.
If I may ask, how would you, from your, I'm trying to understand the approach, how would you answer, how would you like to have that answered?
From, from a board member perspective?
Well, as a board member, so you're talking about it's in the community forum, it's one of the pre-selected questions for the candidate?
So, what I would think is that you, as the experts, as the interviewees, will do the vetting. So, if a question isn't asked, I would assume that you vetted it and it is what it is, right? You can't ask every question, but just the very fact that if people got to submit a question and know that you looked at it.
I got it, okay. So, before the process.
Before the process.
Absolutely. I think if those, if you want to, if you want to elicit those questions, you know, that, again, that, that'll strengthen our process now.
For member Beckham?
So, what I'd really like to do, a little clarification, because it was mentioned that we will have a lot of time to be interviewing these individuals. So, I want to kind of step back then. So, the day that we are interviewing, spending lots of time interviewing, that's the December 19th date?
No, it's going to be in January.
So, December 20th is we're coming back.
Presenting candidates.
Closed session, present candidates, go over interviews, finalize compensation.
Videotape.
Videotapes. Three to four hours we're going to need of your time on December 20th.
And how do we, if we only have three or four hours, how are we spending hours interviewing each of these candidates?
Okay, you're not interviewing until.
So, that happens in January, you're not interviewing them in December.
No, you just said January 20th, we come back.
No, December 20th.
December 20th, we're narrowing down finalists.
Okay, I said December 19th, I think I got my November and December mixed up.
January 22nd, 23rd, 24th, and maybe 25th. You're going to commit to about an hour and a half in the evening.
Of those days.
Each one of those days.
Okay, so, all right, so, go, all right, so you jumped to January. That, those four days, I got that because you start out with 9:00 AM, it's an interview with.
Ten at the end. You're not involved.
We're not involved. We're not involved until after 6:30.
Right.
Okay. So, I would like to find out what that kind of, that looks like. But before that, because it was mentioned, we're going to be spending hours with each candidate interviewing. When does those hours happen?
I don't think I said each candidate. You'll be spending hours interviewing the candidates. So, you know, if you have four of them, it's going to be.
But I thought you came up with eight to 10 candidates.
But in that December 20th session, you're not going to leave with eight to 10 that you want to interview.
So, that, that's what I'm trying to understand.
You're going to come in, go ahead.
Why don't you walk us through that?
We're going to bring you the list of serious applicants, right?
About what?
On the 20th.
On the 20th.
With resumes, reference letters, documents, and videos of those that we believe most closely represent your criteria. You're then going to go, we're going to work you through a vetting process. So, let's say that we have six that meet that, I'm making that up, and we only have four days to interview and you want to commit to four days? We're going to work you through a process where you're going to narrow from six to four and then we're going to line those folks up on those days to commit to the interviews. So, you're going to, you're going to put in on December 20th with us, three to four hours, go through the applicants, not interview them, you're going to listen to a video, watch a video, and then we're going to work you through a nominal technique in which you're going to select who you want to bring in as serious candidates.
That's where I have a question. I don't know how I'm going to be able to make a decision to narrow without sitting down and doing that interview process of the questions that we've all come up with that really do that deep dive into their management style, their history, how they've demonstrated the academic outcomes that they have achieved.
That's what you do with your finalists. If you choose, let's say you choose four, those are the questions that you're going to ask in the interview process when you're face to face with them, interviewing them. Prior to that, we're going to have all sorts of information about these individuals and you're going to say, these are the four we want to meet, these are the four that we want to interview.
On December 20th.
So, and then we'll have those names and we can do some of our own vetting over Christmas break. What happens if something comes up, we come back to you and say, hey, learned this about this candidate, we need to have a exec session to talk about, maybe they didn't make the cut.
You can ask us any questions you want about candidates once their names are public.
So, really, we don't do one-on-one interviewing, meeting them, looking them in the eye until after we actually pick them as a candidate, a finalist.
We're going to give you a great deal of information on December 20th, plus you'll also hear them on the video. But when I, back to your comment or your question about hours, so you have four days in a row, let's say where you spend an hour and a half each day with each candidate in an interview, you still have to process those envelopes. Not all of this is going to happen in that timeframe. You may have another, it's fairly typical, that a board has another meeting or two, you know, to get to a place where there's a decision. So, there's more deliberation to be made.
You may very well decide after four interviews, you've got two that have risen to the top and then you, you could, we could ask them back in for a second round of interviews.
And we've done that on the phone, for example. There's an Arizona district recently that we handled and they wanted to have more information and wanted to talk to that person. We did it by phone. I mean, we can do it however, it depends on where they're living and how easy it is to be available, but it doesn't mean it has to stop with that interview week.
So, is it unreasonable to say, what I was envisioning is that we would be spending that, those four days with them so that we can come to those meetings, sit in the back and watch how they respond so we get a better feel for who this person is? So, it's not just based upon an hour and a half, you know, kind of formalized interview.
Depends on the dynamic in your community, whether having board members in the room is an issue.
How? We did say during the community input sessions that we thought board members or administrators being present might color the responses and what, and what you hear. I would think that same thing might be true in that open forum.
I would echo that. Because that, that will be seen as controlling and, and it, people won't, may not, may not feel at ease to share what they want to share. So, we suggest that board members stay away from those groups. You've commissioned those groups. Let them do their work. You've done your work in closed session through the vetting process. Then you've got the hour and a half or two hours with each candidate and when questions emerge from that, then we have to dig deeper to get to the answers.
So, so really, on December 20th, we will only be watching a video, we will not actually be able to have an interaction with those people at all, is that correct?
No, you'll be interacting with us about what we have found about these candidates. And we'll be very thorough, I can tell you about their background and hopefully answer some of the questions you would have if you were meeting with them in person. And the outcome of that session is the expectation that you would name finalists. I walk out of the room and call them, you know, and ask, are you still in? Because in about 10 minutes, they're going to come out in a public setting and name you. Are you still in? So, that's kind of how this goes. And then you go into a public meeting and identify these people.
You clearly have a lot of pressure on you to make the right choice. There isn't any question about that, right? I mean, I think we know that, we read that in the stakeholder report. But you also have to know that your entire community have to be recruiters now. Now, it's about the welcome mat to get people to come in for the right reasons to do the important work. And if we set up any kind of a process that looks to be intimidating from a candidate's perspective, then what they're going to do is they're going to go to the next job that's on the, on the docket and we don't want that to occur, which is why our model is proven. I mean, we've done, I don't know, 500 searches and it does work. You just have to give us a chance to get through it and get through the 20th. Now, you may have some more questions after December 20th then, and then we have time between the 20th and interview to do it. You may get through the interviews, and we've had this happen, where it's too close to make a decision and you need a phone conversation, you need another interviewer. You may want to go visit a community if they're a sitting superintendent to go, to go get a sense for what that is, but you, trust the model. Our model will work and it'll work well.
When we come and meet with you to go over the potential candidates, consultants have to go through a training every year with me. Our goal is to know more about that candidate than they want us to know so that when we're meeting with you, we know everything about them. And if something pops up that we don't know about, that, I can't say it has And if something pops up that we don't know about, that, I can't say it hasn't happened, but in 500 or 735 searches, I could only think of two times. And it was something that, it happened after the fact, after we, after we screened them.
Happened in between presentation and interview. And there's very little we could do about that.
I can surmise that these videos are not edited in any way when we see them.
True. For times, I wish I could.
They're self-produced.
They're raw.
Yeah. And what we say, you know, some of these people are pretty slick and do a nice job. Some of them don't have those skills. Listen to the content of what they're saying.
Yeah, I'm referring to the content.
Correct.
Yes.
We'll remind you of that when we show the videos.
And they can do them over and over again, and they do that online. So they can get to the, what they consider their final presentation to you, and that's what you get.
Oh, so they're responding to, is it...
No, no, in their preparation, in their...
In their preparation. They're recording this on the internet.
We have, we have three questions we ask. Talk about a significant experience as an administrator you've done. Talk about your leadership style, and talk about your entry plan.
So they receive the questions and, so there's not, they're not interacting with what?
Nope. And it's the same three questions with everybody.
So they get three questions, and then they go record themselves, and then...
It's a little unnatural for them.
No, yeah, I, I know people who've interviewed that listening.
Okay. Good. Any other questions about schedule? These were good questions. I'm going to send this tentative to Michelle, and maybe you can conduct some meetings and kind of put some finesse to it and see how it works. And if you have other questions?
We still have a decision to make, don't we?
I just want to, I want to support what Board Member Hartman requested to be added to your process. And that af, I think is what he said, after the finalists are named public, that we allow the community, who will, who will frantically start vetting these people, to submit questions to you as our consultant. Then you can take those comments or questions, vet them further, and determine the merit.
Yep.
I really like that idea.
I will. We've, we've had situations where someone brought a ques, and one that happened in Kansas, someone, I think it was a board member, said, John Smith was cited for DUI. And they went back and looked and said, yeah, that was John L. Smith, this is John R. Smith. And so we go back and do that.
Okay, so I just want to caution you, when we, and I, we love the idea of doing that, and we'll do it and we'll take care of it. That in the eyes of some people in your community, unless you're completely unlike everybody else in America, nobody is going to be good enough for this job, okay? So there's going to be something, somewhere. And what we have to be able to discern is, is what's legit and, and what is just rumor. And you know the world we live in right now, right?
Will you say that again and get closer to the mic?
Well, it's just, that's why, and we want to be really careful too, because if candidates feel like they're being scrutinized in ways that are totally inaccurate, and, and it, they're going to say to themselves, do I want to work there? Do I want to move my family here? If we're getting questions about, is it true you were bankrupt? Do you, you know, did you have an argument with your wife at Walmart or your husband? I mean, is it, you know...
Well, actually, that is a self-selecting-out mechanism, because, and I hate to say it, but, you know...
That's our district.
We need to...
We have all been attacked that way.
They need, our candidates, I don't, that's actually very important.
So we have to get them ready for that.
They need to know that that is going to happen, and that they do self-select out, that's probably for the best.
Okay.
We'll be honest with them. I am, I'm superintendent of a district that is that way. Our parents are very involved. Our community's very involved. So it requires a certain skill set, too.
And, and they may love the candidate or the person until the candidate or person does something that, there could be one thing that they don't agree with. It could be 99 good things and one bad thing, and boom!
Or their salary, their salaries in the paper, and all of a sudden, get their group to...
There, there should be a very realistic expectation that even if they can't find anything bad, they'll make up something, and that will be online. So I, I mean, our candidates should know that, because...
And if they're experienced and successful, they can live with that as well.
I guess what I was trying to say, not realizing we were going to move into that, is that we, we will answer legitimate questions, but we're not going to, you know, we're not going to open up every cracked door and, and make a phone call back, hey, something came up about a speeding ticket or something like that. I mean, I just don't think that we want to do that.
I have a couple of points of clarification, and I think we maybe have a date issue. So possibly the board names finalists in public on the 20th of December, if they're ready to, after...
No, 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 not January.
Oh, finalists, I'm sorry. You mean the finalists.
Finalists.
You're correct.
They'll be announced as soon as they...
So if they're prepared, they can come out, we'll, we'll have it noticed that way, that they can come out in public and name who the three or four finalists are.
If they're ready to.
If they're ready. Then we're making some kind of link available for our stakeholders to say, you know, I found this, and I want to ask this question, and you guys will go through that as part of your process. One of the things that you also mentioned is with the community forums, somebody will be facilitating that. Either a chairperson of that group or possibly one of our consultants from your firm?
Consultant. I prefer consultant.
Is that, is that outside the scope of what has already been paid for? Is that an extra?
It's an extra.
It's an extra. I wanted to make sure that you understood that.
That's okay, to me.
And as stated in the proposal, you can find that.
Right. I just, I thought so, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that. And then that's also the case for interviews. You won't be in interviews unless the board wants you for an extra charge to be in the interviews. And then I think there was a date issue in January that I saw?
January 22nd is the date that we set with the consultant for the board transition training with Michael Lorsch.
Okay. But we're not needed until 6:30 to 8:00.
So is that scheduled for during the day?
Yeah, it was an all-day.
All-day.
Now that, yeah, the executive leadership team might have to step for, out for an hour, because they're going to be moving at some point, too. But it would be known, I guess...
We could, we could schedule around what, what they are doing, maybe during lunch or whatever. And, and I probably don't need to be, I could miss the beginning of that to, to do my tour and...
We can avoid that date.
Yeah, I, I'm going to, I, I think your superintendent and your executive leadership team needs to be at the Michael Lorsch.
So if we could avoid the 22nd?
That's critical.
If you have three people coming in, we just do Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. What is the 22nd? What...
Thursday, I believe.
It's a Tuesday.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
It's a Tuesday.
Schedule alternative dates.
Or we can schedule alternative dates, because when you get to finalists, it's not always this slick, you know? They may not be able to be here at such and such a time, and we have to pick some other days.
Might go into next week.
Could be.
Okay. If, then, I guess, then, we'd probably like to, like, like to avoid the 22nd, because that training is important, and the consultant is very hard to schedule. He's busy, very busy, so why would we like him?
Okay, so I don't have to keep...
Any other questions? All right, very good, thank you.
Well, my understanding is we still have a decision to make, as far as those forums for the finalists of community, whether it's a small group or...
Want to do it now, or do you want to weigh in afterwards? It doesn't, I mean, are you prepared to give a consensus on that?
Is there more discussion to follow before we make that decision, or...
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, that's great.
The only, the only remaining discussion is the compensation back.
Okay.
You want to talk about the compensation package, and then come back?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that.
If you want to see the sources in more detail, I have them with me today. So what I put together here is information from the Arizona School Boards Association. It was their 2017 superintendent salary survey results, which would be last year's data. They don't do this for this year until, well, they're collecting the data now, but it won't be published till about January. Then I do suburban Phoenix, based on a comparability study, and that's two years old, that came from Dr. Kriegerd. And then just one little blurb at the end about the US, but I thought, well, this is perhaps irrelevant. So back to the first section, I've divided this up in base sal, to base salary, as well as then benefits for the second section. So when you look at the first part, the top third of the paper, you will see that by district location, I have only shown suburban near a large city, which gives you the median, average, and maximum. I will tell you, the maximum is an elementary district in the Phoenix area, I can tell you that right there. So keep in mind that I don't know who all the respondents were for this particular survey, because it went out to the entire state. I know there were 135 of them. But it covers the landscape of rural to urban to suburban. So when it came to the benefits, I thought, well, I'll just pick the ones that are offered by at least 50% of the respondents. And you won't be surprised, these are fairly typical, health insurance, dental insurance, life insurance, disability insurance, and then technology is like a laptop or something that's provided to the superintendent. So the suburban Phoenix one, although two years old, probably is the more, the most relevant. I'm making an assumption, but John, maybe you have a different opinion, I would think that at least the base salary probably bumped in those two years. The benefits may not have. By the way, there's seven districts. I'm pretty confident everything except that number eight that you see on two of these benefits are accurate. But there are seven districts, Chandler, Deer Valley, Dyserd, Gilbert, Peoria, Paradise Valley, and Scottsdale. And not in all cases, and again, if you want to see the spreadsheet, I have the hard copies, you can take a look. In not all cases did we get the information, you know, from that district, or was it disclosed? However, the range of base salary two years ago of that cohort was 171,313 up to 208,80. With an average, 192,725. Benefits, auto allowance, five of the districts, and there you see the range of dollar amount that was identified. Tax sheltered annuity, six of the seven districts. The range you'll see is fairly substantial, 15,500, all the way up to almost $40,000. Vacation days, and that number in parentheses should be seven, by the way. The range was anywhere from 24 to 41 days. That was five of the districts, and the other three didn't identify anything. Life insurance, four of the seven, another fairly substantial range, $200,000 to $500,000. I'm assuming it's term life, but that wasn't identified either. I wouldn't think it's whole life. Performance pay should be the number seven, and you know that in Arizona, that's a requirement of the contract for a superintendent. So you will need to identify performance pay in the contract, ultimately, that's required by law. And then because the other benefits were all over the place, I'm just giving you a list of them. Sometimes it was just one district, sometimes a couple. But this is the span of other components of the contract. Paying for professional dues, professional growth would be PD. Civic reimbursement, there's a district that did a business expense, which was basically up to $15,000 of reasonable business expenses, they'll be reimbursed. So that broad to something very specific when it comes to a cell phone, right? Or moving expense, which, by the way, I didn't think was even legal in Arizona, but perhaps there's a foundation in that district that paid the tab for moving expenses. So there are ways to do this, if you have gifts and donations coming to the district that can be used more broadly for expenses. Cancer plan, I'm assuming that was probably very specific to that person. Longevity payment, if you're in the district for whatever period of time, there's another bump, just a one-time payment for that one district, that was just one of the seven. However, concluding on that spreadsheet is total compensation, and the one I'm showing you here is the salary, the TSA, which is common to the districts, all other benefits, and a, and an assumption that the superintendent would earn 100% of the performance pay. And there you see the range, anywhere from 190,305 up to 245,34, with an average for all compensation at 233,177. And then the US ASA, the American Association of School Administrators, last year, I am only showing you the base salary for districts that have over 25,000 students, 25,000 or more, you're close enough, I think the other cut was like 15. And you can see the range and the median salary, just for base. I didn't think any of the rest of it was probably important to mention. But as we recruit, and there are people from out of state, the base salary is going to be an issue. I can say that fairly confidently. So I don't know where you are or where you will want to be, but it's certainly a conversation we have to have with everybody who's serious about this position they ask. So the question is, what do you want us to tell them?
Board Member Hartman? I was wondering, on this US range, 130 to 316, can you colo adjust that for Phoenix? Because if that's in LA or New York or...
It's Texas.
It's Texas, which is pretty comparable in terms of...
It's Washington, where else?
Denver, Colorado area.
So these are comparable days, you would say?
I didn't dig in to find out where, and I'm not even sure that was in, that wasn't in the report where it identified where these places were, you know, that are, that are, that are disclosing in a survey probably what their compensation was. So I couldn't extract parts of the country.
So, okay, just because I think this could be relevant, because it's a national search. For example, Dallas is over $60,000. So when you say over $25,000, that's really not an apples-to-oranges comparison.
Probably not. There's a range, but there's a range in every one of the other cut places. You know, 15 to 25,000, does it matter? Yes, I, I don't know if LA's in there, Chicago, and New York City, et cetera.
I guess I'm asking you, as the consultant though, to be able to somehow colo or something adjust this, whether it's cost of living or it's really number of students, because Dallas, it's 60,000 students, really isn't an apples-to-apples comparison. So somehow, you need to be able to sell it.
It won't be in this, yeah, it won't be coming from a more general across US. But when we talk to applicants, that's when we will be able to determine. And what, you know, if the Dallas superintendent's interested in coming to Scottsdale, we'd have to have a conversation about, wait a minute, you know? This is a different place.
He's not interested in coming to Scottsdale.
We've already talked to a superintendent in Washington who looks very strong, makes over $300,000. District comparable, $22,000 is her district. And so that's a, you know, it doesn't mean we can't get there, but it's going to depend also on what we can share with, what I'm saying right now is I think it'll maybe be north of 200,000. You know, this is a direct correlation to the student, per pupil funding of a state. So, you know, we talk about Nebraska, their per pupil funding is more than double than it is in Arizona, even though it's in the heart of the heartland. You know, there are some stereotypical assumptions about what people get paid as superintendents. But we are in a place where it's, it's a low salary, even though there are a lot of people in the community who don't even come close to making a six-figure number.
So just last question. I just think it'll be important, are we deciding on a salary range today?
Not necessarily. We just, unless you are to a place where you want to talk about a threshold, or you want to talk about a range.
Because what I would advocate is depending, it's, it's candidate-specific.
It is.
So giving the board the latitude on how to allow it to be candidate-specific is probably good.
Yeah, we do say if we need to, because there's no number, we will say, and Steve will jump in here, because he's more experienced with larger districts. We will say that it's the intention of the governing board to offer a very competitive salary and benefits package to attract the most competent, capable superintendent to the district. That's maybe a little vague for some people, though.
Let me, can I, can I ask, ask, can I answer a question? We have a question? If we come to you with a candidate from out of Arizona, outside of Arizona, and their threshold is 20 to $25,000, maybe 30 more than what you paid, and I'm talking about threshold is $20,000 to $25,000, maybe 30 more than what you paid, and I'm talking about prior to Dr. Kriegerd, is, is that, is that, is that a no-starter conversation for you?
Depends on...
If it's the right candidate.
Well, I mean, is one board member, absolutely not. I mean, there's a way possibly to address anything.
Yeah, it's, it's, sorry. It's not an un-starter for me. I'm looking at it from a viewpoint of having lived in this community where you had board members saying, "We have to pay X if we want to get the best candidate." And there'll be other people in this community that will say, "You paid X because you thought you were getting the best candidate and you didn't." So I think it really does depend on the candidate.
Okay, okay.
Two areas that weren't discussed, I was, I'm hoping that you can discuss a term. So that is contract term.
Yes, you have, in Arizona, you can only go three years, and you can only negotiate the next contract in the May before the last year of the current contract.
So you cannot do an annual contract? You have, you are forced to do a three-year contract?
No, 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 no. You can do one, you can do two, you can do three.
Okay, so you can do one, two, or three terms.
But if you have a multi-year contract, you cannot negotiate the next contract until May before the last year of the current contract.
So I know typically we have, am I, is this a correct statement? Sandra, you've been here the longest. Has this district, as far as I remember, has always done three-year contracts. I would like to have a discussion about maybe changing that term. The other area that I wanted to find out about is, in the past, one of the things that we've done is if the superintendent leaves, is terminated for cause or without cause, we always have a payout. And I'm wondering if that wasn't part of this benefits or what other districts are doing. But I am, would like to have the conversation regarding not having, that we have to do a payout if the individual does not work during whatever the term of the contract is. And I'm wondering if you can, if you can talk about that.
Yeah, you would work through that language with your district legal counsel.
With regard to term length, superintendents are going to be very, very reluctant to uproot and move, particularly coming into a place that's going to have some challenges for a one-year contract, right?
Yeah, it's impossible.
We won't get anybody, I just have to be perfectly honest with you about that. Maybe two, but three's kind of the norm. And I think then, working with your, with your coun, with your counsel, you can create whatever language you want to create, as long as it's acceptable to them. But they may, they may be, they may look at limiting language and say, again, other opportunities in America, places for me to go.
And for this board member, that's okay, because I'm looking for the right individual who's up for a challenge, who's not going to be intimidated, and who is willing to put themselves out there and maybe look at maybe a bonus structure at the end of a period instead of a payout, is what happened to me.
Yeah, you have several options. You have several options. You, as a board, have to agree on where you want to go.
So I just want to put that out there, I think that's a conversation we want to take differently.
I, I personally don't like paying out of contract on somebody who decides to leave for whatever reason. I think we can work through if...
Yeah, this is a mutual agreement. There's the expectation that whatever the timeframe is and the...
If they're terminated by the board, that's, to me, is a different conversation about what, you know, a package is.
Yeah, there's a mutual agreement.
But if they choose to leave.
Right, if there's a start date and an end date, the expectation is they stay.
I like the idea you have on here, a longevity payment.
Somebody's doing that, I don't remember which one of these seven districts.
Board Member Kirby.
Okay, so I'd like to come back to your question that you had for us. You asked us for our feedback on 20 to, I don't know exactly, 20 to 30,000 above what we paid. Can you just give us, rather than phrasing it that way, can you give us a ceiling, a number, that you would like us to say, you know, whether it be 220,000, 250,000, 316,000, whatever that number is that you think you need to get our feedback on today, that to allow you to successfully recruit, because you have, you know, you have all the information. You have this, you have the candidate, you know who the candidates are, what they're making, what's that number so we can be very, very clear with you?
Okay, good question. So look at suburban Phoenix, total compensation, that number's 233,177, right? That's kind of that median or average. I'd, I'd like to be able to, I would say, consider 255 total compensation, because every state calculates that differently. Right, so you've got some, you've got some things. Dr. Camerazol said, if you, if that individual gets full performance pay, right? So how the money gets distributed is really going to be specific to how you do it in Arizona. But if that number, that total package number was, say, between, you know, as high as 255, I think we can, we can pretty much touch the stakes.
So my question then would be, does anyone in the room know what we're paying right now? Or what our, what our, maybe our past three contracts have been, total comp?
Two years ag, oh, I can tell you.
Okay, thank you.
Two years ago.
Okay. Do I don't think it's that far. No, it's 204, I think she said.
Oh, comp, 234,600.
Years ago.
Two years ago.
Two years ago.
Two what?
Two, John.
234,600.
That's total comp.
234,600.
Total comp. So this is, so this is somewhat like, I kind of, this is somewhat like buying a house. We need to give you our, because if we said 300, we could get some stellar candidates, but then it might be very difficult for us to, for our community to swallow that. It becomes a political challenge.
Right.
So we need to give you a ceiling.
And, and the reason for that is...
And be ready to sell it.
We, we don't want the candidate to come in here with the, you can negotiate with the board, and they're making 305, and their bottom line is 275, and you want them badly, and now you don't get them because they're not going to come for that. So we want to do that on the front end.
Yeah, it's like buying a house.
Board Member Previs.
Oh, I'll defer to it.
Can you talk a little bit about, you have under the suburban Phoenix, and that's where you got, you came up with your number? Because it does seem to me compensation does have something to do with enrollment, or does it not?
Well, these are the...
So instance, if you have, you know, Chandler has 49,000 students, so they're more than double than what Scottsdale is. So should, so should we be paying the same as a Chandler when that superintendent is overseeing 49,000 students, and in Scottsdale they're overseeing 23?
Two years ago, Chandler's base salary was the lowest, oh, no, second to the, well, third to the lowest, $183,920.
That's just salary, huh?
Yes, their bottom line, 233,920.
Right here on this number.
Less, less than your bottom line, by a few hundred dollars.
Now, we do know that has been, a superintendent that's been there a long time.
Camille has been there as long as I have.
Which typically you, you know, it's, it might be on the lower end because of that. So do we have Deer Valley, which has, what's their enrollment? Now, they've had a newer superintendent.
Two years ago, base salary 175,582, their total comp, 219,478.
What's their enrollment?
I don't know.
About 30, about 30,000.
About 30,000, so they're larger also. So that's, I guess, I'm asking the experts here, is there a correlation between what you pay and who they, how many, the, the size of the district?
Well...
Because you've got a much larger budget, you've got more students that you're supervising, or principals you're supervising?
You have more help in the bigger districts. What you're really compensating for is the work. What's, what's the work? What do you expect? You know, when, when you, when you compensate at the high end of a range, you have high end of the range expectations of that superintendent. And if you compensate at the lower end, you know, then the message that you're, you're sending is that, you know, you don't really want the higher range, higher-end range people applying. And so it really, while, while, while I think courts of industrial relations like to compare numbers, students, number of faculty, and, and create something that's equitable, what we always suggest is, you know what your challenges are. You know, compensate and expect that level of, of success.
So back to your questions earlier, I mean, performance pay is a good example. You look at the range here, and you can put into the contract, you know, whatever specificity there needs to be about how performance pay is computed, and make sure that it's a fairly significant amount of the contract when they deliver the results. You know, so you have these, you have these options.
Okay. Board Member Kirby. Okay, so another, based upon your experience, how does the figure of 255,000 track with what, what innovative superintendents across the country are pulling in, regardless of district size?
It's low.
Right, that's my question, it's low. So, so, because that was one of our criteria, if you remember, innovation?
Mm-hmm.
So how low is it?
Well, if, if you're describing the 21st century superintendent that is creative, innovative, proven success record, every five years is moving up in scope and responsibility, they're commanding three plus around the country, and they're being heavily recruited. So, but, but I have to tell you, your, your state's different because of how you fund public schools. And so it's, it's, some of the states that are doing the most aggressive recruiting, they're, they're, they don't have budget issues, they don't have rent-for-ed issues, they, I mean...
Well, I, I agree. I mean, I completely agree with what you're saying. So that puts us in a position of really understanding, if we go with a, you know, 230 to 255, we're likely not going to get that innovative 21st century superintendent that we were hoping we would get when we put the job description together. There's a disconnect there.
Well, or, or you may get somebody that this is the next natural step for them, and they haven't had a chance to develop that creative and innovative.
So we're not going to get that proven 21st century innovator.
And then, and then your district's going to have to work to keep them.
On the other hand, you might have an assistant superintendent in a very large district who's done all the work, and has a proven track record, but not the superintendency itself. You know, there are going to be folks like that who are interested in this position as well. So to Steve's comment about next step, the superintendency.
I'm just, I wanted to get a feel for what is that innovation commanding in the marketplace? I understand everything and agree, I think you're spot on, everything you said. I just didn't know what the figure was.
Are also those higher salaries due to the cost of living in some of those locations?
Some of it is. Not all of them, that's not what they're saying.
Okay. I mean, if you, you're in, I don't know, California or New York, it is more expensive to live there.
You have, what's, what innovative 21st century superintendent was, the one in New York?
I don't know, I'm just using that as an, as a hypothetical.
The guy that came out of Tucson is now the chancellor of the New York Public School.
Well, there you go, okay.
There's quality of life factors.
I'm just saying, there are great school districts in New York, Illinois, you know, whatever, that are consistently have students that are terrific, but it is also more expensive to live there.
I am absolutely personally comfortable with the 255 total comp. I'm, I'm a little worried it might be too low, but, you know, it is high for Arizona, it's high for Scottsdale, it's high for Arizona.
It's high for Arizona.
If you all agree that we, that's kind of our range, then that gives us a chance to have the kind of conversation we have to have. If for some reason we believe that it's going to require more, we'll let you know that when we come back on the 20th.
But that was just me, I don't know that everybody else is way in.
Board Member Hartman. I, I, I'm a little bit, I'm less comfortable with putting a cap on it, because I think the, the, you, we want to see what talent we can attract, and it really needs to be candidate-specific. And so by putting a cap on it, you're, there may be a candidate out there that's saying, mm, not that interested, right? You want it to make it our choice to decide whether a candidate's the right fit or not, not give a candidate a reason not to come here. And if salary's one of those, I would say, take, we don't want to put that on the table. We want to create the best set of candidates, so, so I don't want to put a cap on it. There's nothing wrong with saying, this is what the average range is, this is, you know, cost of living, all those kinds of things, but for the right talent, total compensation's negotiable.
And it, and it always is, and, and we go into it with that, but we didn't want to bring you candidates that you were not going to be able to reach terms with. That's, that's what we want to guard against, right? Because they don't want to, they don't want to do that, and we don't want to put you through that kind of an experience.
Well, also at the same time, if somebody's applying in Arizona, they should have some sort of understanding of what's going on in Arizona, and that our pay scales aren't as high as other places.
Yeah, if they're doing diligence, they know something about the state.
Yeah.
I would agree with that.
Board Member Hartman. However, to that point, you could find a stipend that, you know, here's the salary, and here's a community partner that's willing to invest another $30,000 a year, right? I mean, there's a...
Like a university system.
Exactly, there's a way you can get to something with, outside of limitations, just don't create limitations, because there's ways that you can get around these things, if it's the right person.
I think that's what I'm hearing from everybody, that it's going to be candidate-specific. We are not going to give, we're not, we don't negotiate for, for the candidates. You know, it comes to that time when you make your choice, now you begin the negotiation process, then you can do whatever you want to do. We just want to make sure we bring in candidates that are not coming from states where they're highly compensated, to a place like Arizona where they're hoping for 280, 290. If we can't get there, and I don't think we can, I think we, we move on to the next candidate. And that doesn't mean that they're more creative and innovative than anybody, it just means they happen to be in a state where salaries for superintendents are quite a bit higher.
In my view, they need to have been innovative and creative for a period of time, not two, three-year stints. You know, it's hard to get a lot done in a short period of time. So those are things we look at as well. You want them to stay, right? We'll find out whether they've stayed anywhere else.
And if they're staying for a long time, their salary will most, it won't be stagnant. So if they're doing their job and they're staying with us, I mean, that's just their first year.
Anything else? I think, I think we've got a good feel for the direction.
You're to be commended to be this thorough. Not all boards have this kind of level of interaction with us, and really try to think through and talk through this in a public, public setting. So you're obviously serious about this work.
Did you want to go back to the community forum question?
I think, I think that decision kind of needs to be made today, correct? Unless, unless we just really decide we're not ready to.
So I'm clear, is the question whether we go with a group that meets all four days, or an open forum? Is that the question?
Yeah. Or, or is it something, I mean, maybe if we're not ready to make the decision, that is something we can decide in December as well?
Right. Is that...
We need to make it before the 20th, because we meet with the chair people. But if you choose to, to talk it over some more, and just let us know.
Okay, all right, so that's our shift.
If you're prepared to do it today, we can.
So I would just ask my fellow board members to consider the, the parallel of the open forum as it's been, I mean, of the closed, what did you call it, closed group?
Select group.
Select group, as it's been described here, and how we have our prin, our principal committee, selection committee, it's very similar to that. And think about the feedback that we sometimes get about those principal selection committees from the commu, over the years, from the community members. Some are positive, some are negative. So just, it's this exact same process that they're describing.
Well, I'll bring, I'll bring up, so because you have a lot more history than I do, with that, what I have heard is that there are very positive comments regarding the fact that they had the opportunity. So is that different from what you've heard in the past, that, an open community forum? That they've had an opportunity to come out and meet the principal and have a way in? So is, is...
Well, I'm talking about the...
On the principal level?
The principal selection committees that are pre, the questions are pre-written, they're, there's, they're very structured, and it's a small group of people...
It's a small group that are invited to attend.
Making a decision, very scripted, for the whole community. I don't always get positive feedback about the process.
Because it's more of a select group than an open.
It's very, it's perceived as being very controlled. I personally tend to lean more towards the open, to let whoever wants to come, and if you'll facilitate, I lean that way, but...
I, I'm going to throw in, because yeah, a lot of history, I, I agree with your comments regarding the principal selection committee. If people want to get upset about who was chosen for that committee, then that usually feeds, you know, negative, negativity onto that principal.
That's a good point.
Kind of can set them up to fail. Not comfortable with that. I also am very hesitant, looking at our past in this district, of creating a committee type with certain hand-selected individuals, and giving them that perception of, you are recommending and nominating a superintendent, and then when time comes and discussions with the board happen and it's not their candidate, then you have that negativity layer on top of it. So I, I'll just... it's not their candidate, then you have that negativity layer on top of it. So I, I'll just throw out right at the beginning, I think my gut would say the second open controlled forums.
I, if we do that, I would like it to be facilitated by somebody from-
I agree. I agree a hundred percent.
Somebody from outside.
Because I would hate to see those forums veer off into, instead of discussions about these candidates, veer off into discussions that our district faces, and everybody's got an opinion about.
Same as the stakeholder.
Exactly.
Two, two of the consultants on the stakeholder teams that we have reside in the Phoenix area. So we've got somebody available for you.
Okay. And I would weigh in also. I think that the more openness, transparency, that you've opened it up to as many people who has a desire to be there, we have it be facilitated, is the way that this district, our, our community has been asking for. They're not looking to be controlled, and not have their voices heard.
Board member Hartman?
Just a clarifying question. So in the open format, are there still the predefined questions, so that every candidate gets asked the same questions?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, it's, people can observe the process, there can be some interaction with the candidates, but the scripted questions.
And the facilitators will make that clear at the opening-
Yep.
-of each of these sessions.
Okay.
But I want to make clear, we'll do that, but I want to point out that is an additional charge. It's in our proposal, you can see it.
I think it's worth while.
It's worth it.
And, and that you would stay afterwards and facilitate the, the filling out of the form also, if you will. Because you said after they meet, they need to somehow-
That was with the, I thought that, is that with the, sorry, I'm cutting.
Fifteen to thirty minutes afterwards, aren't you still going to-
That's with the teacher group, the student group, classified group.
And you don't do that with the community group?
And we coach them, we coach the chair people on how to do that, and they're very comfortable with that.
That was only if we did the first small group committee.
So what do you, what do you anticipate from the, the committee, leaving, and how are they going to voice what they felt?
Well, we have had, uh, forms for them to fill out, so they could jot down their, their comments and hand them in to the facilitator.
Okay.
And we just hang on to them until-
And then pass them along to us?
Yep.
So, okay, then that, unless there's something-
Yep.
-that they don't just leave and then go, because they don't have an avenue, go to Facebook or to the parking lot.
But, we, we'll point out, they're not required to fill out the form, but it is-
Oh, that we offer it, that's fine.
Is it, I have another question on that. Since we're making it a very open, do you have any objections or critiques of live streaming those?
I don't think we've ever done that. I, I don't have a problem with it. I, you know, we, if you've got the technology, we, we're comfortable with it.
For the community forum, correct?
The big community forum.
Not the other one?
The big community forum. I, I don't know if we have the technology in the same room that's big enough to hold the community forum, but if we do, I'd love us to live-
Good question. I would have, would that reduce attendance if we did that?
I don't think so.
Your, your local TV stations will probably be there.
Anyway?
They usually are.
In some public setting.
Yeah, when you do, when you do that kind of a dynamic, they typically, that's their coverage.
No, they're not going to have a whole meeting.
But then, but then they screen, and they only show what they want to show.
Yeah, if you have the technology, and depending on location, absolutely, we could livestream.
Debbie?
No.
Only at Coronado.
How is that our?
Could be just audio also, if they can't do video.
I think we probably only have the technology at Coronado if we're talking about the high school sites, right?
Yeah.
For live streaming.
Right. We don't have the live streaming set up.
Here?
We only stream internally at the schools purposely, so we don't have that set up. I'm, I'm not sure that we couldn't do it, but I know we don't have it now. We, I could look into it.
You can do it here?
We can do it here all the time.
Coronado.
Here in Coronado.
You can do it here or Coronado.
Coronado, but only in the boardroom.
Yeah, right here.
Well, that's, I mean, are you tracking video or audio?
Oh.
Well, I mean, if, you know, if we can't do video, then is it possible just to do the audio at any location?
There, there's lots of possibilities, it's just not the same streaming setup we have here.
Oh.
So we can definitely determine what we can do, and let you know by the end of the week.
So can I ask-
That's acceptable.
Just do it like Coronado, like any regular board meeting?
Yeah.
So do you know, of the, um, community meetings that you had to put this together, what was the largest group you had?
I, I don't know, but I do, I did talk to consultants every day, and they were very impressed with the feedback they got, and they said the turnout was good. Now, I had a comment from somebody that, I, I think we have two-hundred-and-fifty people that we visited, that is good, you know?
So two-hundred-and-fifty over, how many did we have? Five?
But that included staff, teachers.
Yep.
That included everybody.
Everybody. So it includes just community.
Community members and pay.
Do you have those numbers, so that you can provide them for us?
I can get it. I, I don't have one.
Well, I'm just asking, because we, I mean, we could probably double it, whatever the biggest group was, double it, and that is probably going to be what our turnout will be, if we livestream.
Okay, so, so you're talking about-
Yeah, this room is plenty.
This room is plenty big.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And this one seats even more than Coronado, so this is-
Perfect. Let's do it here then.
It's also in the middle.
Yeah.
It's also in the middle.
Yeah. Thank you.
Because if, if I heard correctly, the community forums that were held for input, the attendance was actually pretty small, correct?
Some are, so, yeah, some are, some aren't. It depends on the night, depends on what's going on. The fact that we had multiple ones, that people could choose where to go to, you know, I, the, our, our team was very impressed with what they heard from people, and the turnout. You know, they were, we, we've had, we've had situations where consultants show up and nobody shows up.
That's sad.
And you did have the survey for-
We did.
Others who could not come.
Yeah, we had two-hundred people fill it up.
It was a pretty robust response when you go through the last part of this stakeholder report.
I should have pointed that out. The, the survey information, we don't, we don't edit that. That's how it comes into us. We do take out anybody's name or any profanity. As it came in, that's how it gets printed.
Board member Hartman?
So just a clarifying question. So in that, um, open format, um, community format, of which there's predefined questions with the facilitator asking the same questions of every candidate, is there also, who, i- is there also a, a panel that's kind of listening, a representative panel, panel that's listening to kind of jot down how they heard the response, right? Because sometimes how somebody, how are you evaluating kind of the side-by-side response on each of those? Is that, who's doing that?
We're not going to evaluate that. That's entirely up to the people that are participating.
If they want to fill out the form, they can fill out the form, we'll collect it, and then you can, you can read it.
You can evaluate their responses.
You'll get it.
And that, that works?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Of course, if it's on video, we can watch at home and not intimidate.
Board member Beckham?
In, in the executive summary, you say that the survey is the last section?
I think so.
It is the last section.
I don't see it in my form. So what page would that be on?
It's just my stakeholder.
I think it says teachers.
It's the same groups they identify themselves with.
The last thing I see is page fifty-seven, where it says teachers, and then it is, it doesn't say anything else. Or I'm, I'm just not seeing it.
It begins on page twenty-seven.
Oh, sorry.
And they self-identify what group they're from.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So the preponderance of the report is from that survey.
So, and do we know of the hundred-and-ninety-seven responses, if any of those were the same? Because you could do it on your computer, your laptop, as well as your phone.
We go, we do go through that. Like I said, we look for profanity, we look for any individual that's been sorted out, and we look for repetition. So if there's repetitious, the chances are someone's submitted it twice.
And did you feel that there were many that submitted twice?
No.
Okay.
That seldom happens.
Okay, what are the questions? Do we have?
Anything else?
Anything else, yeah. You tell us. Have we given a good direction?
I think, yeah, I, I think the big one is, I think we've got a pretty good direction on, on compensation, and that's going to help us a great deal. We'll continue to work with Michelle and Sandra on the logistics for the interview pieces and get that going. And our work now begins, and that's the vetting process, and we will be back on December twentieth, ninth, is that correct?
Yes.
December twentieth, here?
Yes.
And that was in the executive session, because we will be sharing information about those individuals. I don't know if you've thought about this, but I, my personal opinion, I think you should invite your two new board members to sit in, not participate, but at least sit in that process and see the candidates, because they're going to be interviewing. But that's a board's decision. All right?
I'm not sure you can have them for the executive session, but we can-
No, we can.
And that's a legal question that Michelle can answer.